At this time, I'll call our special meeting to order. This meeting is tonight to look at the signed ordinance and proposed food truck ordinance. If you will, I'll please rise for our invocation and I'll ask Commissioner Legg if he would lead us in our invocation.
Father, we thank you again for a wonderful day. We thank you for the rain. We pray that you put it to the advantage of our town, our lake. We pray that you be with us tonight to help us make good decisions. That we go over these instruments that we have before us. And we'll make good decisions based on the information that's in this material. We thank you for the military around the world, those who have worked for us, kept us free and safe. We ask that you be with the town manager as she goes through her procedure this week. That you help her and stand by her. We never fail to give you the praise. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the agenda that's before you?
So move.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. I'll turn it over to Mr. McClellan.
Hello, Madam Mayor, fellow commissioners. Um, one thing I talked to several of you about before we started was that I probably wanted to go over the food truck ordinance first. There are only minor changes that I added to what we presented last time. I didn't make any changes to the submitted information. But I think for the next twenty minutes we go through this, it'll give people more time to get here. They maybe want to speak about the signed ordinance.
Yes.
Um, and for the food truck ordinance, because this is just me giving you the final language, I don't have a presentation for that. I'm just gonna basically read through the ordinance. Another thing you guys have to realize too is the presentation that I made on July ninth was just regulations. But when I'm tasked with drafting an ordinance, I have to do the purpose and the intent language and all that kind of stuff. So that's where the majority of this food truck ordinance starts. Um, this is just basic language that is in every ordinance that outlines. Um, the purpose of the ordinance is to minimize any negative or detrimental effects of food trucks on neighborhood properties. Um, all food trucks approved operate within the town Hope Mills limits. This is according with the provisions of this ordinance. So this is just standard language. It talks about the purpose. In terms of the title, we're basically calling it the Town of Hope Mills Food Truck Ordinance. The authority is granted to us by General Statute one sixty-eight dash three eighty-one. Um, the jurisdiction, you see a line that'll basically be filled in with the date of the adoption of the ordinance. Um, also, um, in conversations with the county, this will go to the code of ordinances. Being that it's basically gonna be administered directly here. Um, so this will be pulled into our municipal code update. But what we'll do is, because this is probably gonna go live before our updated municipal code, we'll just ensure that the ordinance is on our website for anybody. Um, Commissioner Bellflower was asked, and we'll get into this later, about the application. I'm in the process of drafting that. Um, I just felt tonight I'd just give you the actual ordinance, but you, there will be an official application that ties to the process that you'll hear tonight. Uh, flip over to the next page. Ironically, we're talking about application, so you're basically saying that, um, the provisions of this ordinance shall be interpreted and applied as minimum requirements. Um, in terms of the ordinance administrator, typically you're speaking of the town manager or her designee. That is basically where I come in as her designee. If we're talking about zoning permits, uh, A would be, um, the information that speaks to why the zoning permit is required and about how it's unlawful to commence the operation of a food truck in any manner within the Town of Hope Mills limits until you receive that permit from the zoning or planning and development administrator. Um, the approval of plans is where we're getting into the meat. Um, this is where you're basically saying that the development and planning administrator shall review all applications for a zoning permit subject to the, um, information that must be submitted with the application. Um, a plan that shows the actual shape, location, and dimensions of the proposed lot for use, shape, size, and location of buildings and other structures on the lot, and proximity to any adjacent residential, commercial uses or residential uses. That's where we're getting into the distance requirement, but I'll get into that a little later. Um, location of any other food trucks. What you're doing is, I'm cross-referencing another section that talks about requirements just to make sure that they're reinforced. Uh, four, as such, other information concerning the lot or adjacent lots as may be essential for determining whether the provisions of this ordinance are met. Um, five, the clearly delineated location of all parking spaces located on the lot. This is basically your site plan that you'd have to submit with the sketch, uh, as a part of the sketch plan review. Um, all associated food trucks must be listed in the application. Your approval from Cumberland County Health Department is required. Copy, this is the extra stuff we added in, copy of liability insurance is required. Uh, zoning approval must be placed inside the food truck at all times and zoning permit must be approved annually. And I think it's something in here about, um... And I'll probably get back to that later, but there is a section where you need to add the, um, workers' comp.
It's, you have it in here.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's number eleven.
Um, in terms of the complete application, um, these are the things that actually make the application complete. Authorization of property ownership. Again, this goes directly back to the regulations. At the presentation, you were just getting regulation after regulation. Now you're seeing where those regulations are actually gonna be located within the ordinance. Approval of Cumberland County Health Department, approval of liability insurance, and, uh, application for business privileges licenses. Um, the issuance of the zoning permit, um, talks about if we're basically gonna deny an application, this sets the language that requires that I explain that to, um, the applicant. Again, this is standard things. The only thing in this that's not standard language is the actual regulations. Um, but because this is a new ordinance, we had to actually clearly define what is a food truck. Uh, food trucks are defined as a licensed mobile and motorized vehicle food unit that is temporarily utilized on a privately owned piece of property where food items are being sold to the general public. What we also may not realize is, in the health department, there's also a push cart, um, type of business that's not regulated as heavily as a food truck, but I wanted to put that definition into it as well. We wouldn't be approving those through this process, but putting this push cart in here as a definition kind of gives you the distinction between what's considered a food truck and what's not. Everything at the push cart level goes through, uh, existing process called itinerant merchant process, which is enforced by the police department. Next, you have your permitted districts. Again, this is just the standard information that we provided before. Your allowable districts will be C one P, plan local business district, C two P, plan service and retail, CP, plan commercial districts, M one P, plan light industrial, MP, plan industrial, and MXD, which is your mixed use. In terms of the development standards, again, this is restating what we already submitted. The property must have a primary use. No sales while parked on the public street without being tied to a Town of Hope Mills event. This kind of preserves us if we do, are having things, uh, during the Fourth of July for Trade Street Lake Celebration, things of that nature. Capacity is capped at two trucks allowed on parcels less than an acre. Three food trucks on parcels between one half acre and one acre. Four food trucks allowed on parcels over in the acre or set for special events. Temporary outdoor seating is allowed only on lots one acre or more. The distance requirements, you recall, we increased that a little bit from the first presentation to the second one. Two hundred feet from any existing restaurant, fifty feet from another food truck, forty feet from any sidewalk or driveway, forty feet from any fire hydrant, two hundred feet from any residential district. In terms of parking, your approved location must be physically marked. Cannot impede or block other existing parking areas. Hours of operation, again, we've massaged that a little bit to make it more strict. Um, it's eight AM to midnight and eight AM to nine PM for any food truck located at that two hundred foot threshold. So you're still allowed to operate at two hundred feet, but if you're at that two hundred foot limit, then your, um, hours of operation go down to nine PM. Um, you can use a lot, they can utilize free standing sandwich boards, um, only within the permitted area. Many of them use those as their menus. And you have, um, the food truck service window must be placed away from driving lanes to prevent public safety issues. Now, in terms of the outdoor event permits, we do have a process for outdoor events that is a pretty standard process. You're required to have property authorization. But what happens if you have an outdoor event that is a food truck rodeo, kind of like ours, but a private, um, entity wanted to have one? That would be covered under this section where it allows you to have more than, than one truck, but it must be an outdoor event approved, um, by staff. All associated food trucks must be listed as a part of that outdoor, uh, permit. Copy of your zoning approvals for all the associated trucks that you're gonna be, um, that are gonna be located at the event must be, uh, submitted. Food truck distance requirements are waived for outdoor events because you want them to be a little closer to each other, but just the distances from each other, not the other distance requirements. Um, there is no cap on the number of allowed trucks. Outdoor events for food trucks must comply with Section one oh two A, um, eleven oh one A of the Town of Hope Mills zoning ordinance. And that is the outdoor permit section of the ordinance. And all other distance requirements shall apply. So even if you do have someone trying to have an outdoor event, um, permit for a food truck for a rodeo, if that's within two hundred feet of a restaurant, it can be approved. If it's within two hundred feet of a residential area, it can't be approved. So all those other distance requirements will apply. The only ones that I'm waiving are the distance requirements from one food truck to another because you're trying to pack them into that one lot, um, anyway. And then, uh, the fees that we, uh, did amend, it would be one annual fee of fifty dollars. If you recall, many of the food truck, um, patrons that actually came out spoke about how we didn't need to actually, um, assess fees per location. It's a one-time annual fee and then, uh, that, that permit has to be renewed every year and that fifty dollars has to be paid every year, but it's a one-time fee for fifty dollars, no matter where you're operating. And that's basically it. Again, this is pretty clean. This is, the only thing that you're seeing now that's different from what we initially did at the work session is the, uh, liability insurance and the workers' comp. And then everything else is just your standard boilerplate language in terms of definition, authorization of the town manager and things of that nature. But I had to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. It's me. I'm sorry.
So, it might not be popular when I say this.
Oh.
But it seems a little unfair that we ask people to pay a permit every time they have a yard sale on their own property, but we're gonna give them a one-time fee of fifty dollars a year to park a vehicle and make money and they don't pay taxes in Hope Mills. Does anybody? I mean, I don't know, how much is our yard sale? Just out of curiosity, I've never had one, so.
Five dollars.
So.
And you're limited to four times a year.
Yeah, so.
I mean, they may be paying, um, property tax if they're domiciled in Hope Mills.
Yeah, right.
If they're out of town.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir.
I hope this is not too far behind. But I do agree with the limited times a year for yard sale. Cause that keeps us from having junk sales every weekend on a piece of property somewhere in town. We've got people that do it anyway.
Yeah.
But they're smart enough to know that we don't have anybody out on Saturday. Which I've made a suggestion several times that we have expected to rotate, to go out and check for yard sales permits. But that's a little off base of what we're here to discuss, but I just thought I'd throw that in the, in the mix to be discussed at a future time if possible.
I think most of our other licenses are a one-time zoning permit and they're done.
Yeah, that's correct. And any other permit that requires a zoning approval is just a one-time fee, period.
The reason we asked for this annual one was to make sure they're in compliance with the various.
Yes, because the nature of the way they operate and they're being mobile. And I do have a very open line of communication with the health department. They send me their updated list every year. But if I approve one guy today, there's no guarantee that he's still in compliance with the health department or his liability insurance or any of those other things that we aren't tracking. So from my standpoint, the annual fees is more of a tracking mechanism of compliance from my end, um, just because of the nature of how they operate.
One other question is, we're not limiting how long they can be at a location. So for example, I pay my fifty dollar permitting fee and I set up and I just stay there.
Now, you have the hours of operation, but you, if you pay your fee and you're at Lowe's and you have an agreement with Lowe's, you can pretty much post up at Lowe's every single day, um, based on still being in compliance. Now, I'm not sure what the next, cause Zorbas is right there too, so Lowe's may be a bad idea, but my point is.
I was asked that this morning because there's one that is at Kaufman Shopping Center most, all the time. And so with it being there all the time, once it's permitted to be there, it would be like it's set up its own business there. And are we saying that's okay? That was the question I was asked.
To Commissioner Larson's position, um, if we have one-time annual fees and the nature of how this guy's operating isn't to be mobile, like on today and in tomorrow, he's somewhere else. He's there every single day, all day. I can see how her argument becomes valid in terms of that being pretty much a permanent business. This operating in a different way than the, uh, regulations that a brick and mortar would have to operate. But I will say that this is basically the nature of the beast in terms of food truck operation in general. I'm not aware of any ordinance that actually puts regulations to the point where it... Now, there is one town, I think Cary limits the number of times per week.
Yes.
That they can operate, but that's the only ordinance out of about maybe eight different ones that I looked at that regulated duration, um, outside of just, um, operational hours.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And it's good that you brought that up, Chancellor. First, I have a couple of questions, but first I wanna, uh, congratulate you on a well-presented document.
Thanks.
And for answering the question about the, uh, draft application. And I know that'll be forthcoming. It's interesting that you asked about the, that you brought up the Cary issue like Commissioner Larson said because, and, and along with the mayor, I heard the very same thing too. And from what I understand, some folks in Cary brought up the same questions we did. That you can have a food, a food truck that could just camp out in a parking lot indefinitely. Uh, there, there's a possibility of that happening. And I guess some of this did happen, uh, in the Cary.
That's correct.
In the Cary city, uh, limits, where they had to come back in, uh, post approval of an ordinance and redress that part, uh, which, you know, kind of upset some folks, but you always, you always have nine out of ten will do the right thing.
Yeah.
But you always have the one.
I will say that those, those questions are pretty much typical across the board, no matter what municipality it is in terms of.
Yeah.
The, uh, relationship between brick and mortars and food trucks. I will say that in all ordinances, you have a system of checks and balances and controls that are meant to address some of these issues. So in the spirit of the opposition of that food truck operating perpetually, it's really when you have a brick and mortar that doesn't feel that he's being treated the same way. Typically, you're indirectly addressing competition because that brick and mortar didn't feel that this guy should be able to sit here all day and he doesn't. But I think that's where your distance requirements come in, where if that op, food truck is able to operate every single day that way, I think Kaufman Commons, if you're talking about a restaurant, if there's a restaurant across the street within that two hundred foot, that's not a approved location anymore. So my point is, those system of controls are meant to address some of those issues. The million dollar question is, does it address it to the level where you feel that it's not a concern anymore?
If we look at no more than four times per week in the same location.
I think, be, this is a wide open ordinance, so to me, I think you guys have the.
And maybe I propose that to you, Chancellor, but I also propose it to the board, maybe.
Now, I, think about it.
Maybe no more than four times in one location per week.
That key is, is, and I think that's the olive branch. You're not saying two times per week anywhere in the town. You're saying you can't operate more than four times in a week in the same spot. That is different.
Same location.
Than just saying, I, I think if you say twice a week, period, I think that's a little heavy-handed, but if you say four times.
I'm looking at the location. I'm, you know, I'm looking at camping out in a parking lot and just, you've got a business on wheels. And there's no ordinance that prevents you from being there. You paid your fee, you've complied, you have an application that's approved and stamped, and you're good to go. And you're gonna set up in that parking lot like squatters rights.
And I'll add, uh, more to what you said. The definition that I crafted is mobile. If you're permanently there every day, you're not mobile anymore.
That's right.
You get to leave at half o'clock, but you're not a mobile food truck anymore. The nature and how they operate is, and I follow them, I just like the food a lot, but, um, someone may be at a location on Monday, they may be at a different location on Tuesday. They usually operate six days a week, but I can't think of one food truck that I frequent that's at the same spot every single day. I know one that's usually at Best Buy of Scavo Road regularly, but I can't think of it breaking that four times a week threshold, to be honest with you. I think that's a very good point. It puts some more controls in place.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't hammer it to the point where you're in, you're, you're infringing on their ability to operate. Uh, but that's up to the board if that's how you guys want to address it.
If I may, uh, give and take in all this, cause, uh, a very successful business is at Kaufman Commons called Stop Button. It's owned by Zach Crane. And, uh, we don't want people that are drinking over there with no food supply. Uh, our HMPD's gonna be busy handing out tickets and shutting down one of our more successful businesses in Hope Mills if there's not some sort of food truck out in that parking lot, in my opinion. As, as that Dirtbag ails, uh, there's a food truck every time they're open.
Yeah. A lot of the breweries do operate with food trucks. They almost like to go hand to hand.
I know the Taco Truck probably frequents the Kaufman Commons. Uh, I, I don't, I didn't think more than four days a week, but, uh, he does a tremendous business up there and.
I think, to, to be honest, to, to, um, address, um, Commissioner Bellflower's comments, I think four times a week is pretty generous and, and still, you know, I.
There should be other food trucks willing to participate with them, I would think.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, uh, I don't know if the new Hardee's opening today, I think it was today, wasn't it?
Yes, sir, five AM.
If that's gonna throw this food truck at Kaufman's too close.
That's what I said. I gotta, I gotta look at that one.
And what keeps that food truck from operating over here on this side of the parking lot three days and going to the other side of the parking lot every one of three days?
If we're pushing forward with this four times a week, that's still the same property. It's the same location.
Same location.
Same location.
It's just a different location on that.
But if I move that truck, it's not the same location no more.
Well, I, I, my language would say property. It wouldn't say location, it would say property.
Yeah, the property.
We know what we're talking about. Somebody's gonna try to.
But, but what Mr. Legg is saying though, imagine if this side of the same property is a hundred and, um, eighty feet from a restaurant. Ten spaces down, he's in compliance. So this is where, it, people do get real tricky. Um, I think some cities allow for, uh, the authorization of property ownership to circumvent the distance requirements. Uh, a friend of mine owns a franchise, I, I won't say the name, but he has major issues with them because in that municipality, as long as they have authorization of property ownership, they can put, uh, food truck right beside them. Um, that's not allowed in our ordinance, but that's what I did to address that. Um, so regardless of whatever it is, uh, my goal is to try to come up with a language to address the issue and to see where we are with it. I do think if we're talking about the frequency of operation, uh, the four times or some cap per week, but four times in the same location, I think that's reasonable.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that an emotion, if, if, if that's, uh, the direction of the board.
Would it be a form of emotion to add that or could we just?
Just agree.
Agree to do that.
Yeah, I think it is.
You hadn't adopted the ordinance yet, so you're still in the draft.
We're still in the draft. So would you all agree?
It'll be brought back to you all again one more time for final approval.
Yeah, would you all agree to the four days in one location?
Hopefully under consent agenda. They would still be able to have another truck there, it just wouldn't be the same truck for four days.
That's the difference.
So are you like, if Little Taco was there for four days and then they leave, they could bring a different food truck in.
Yes, and that same guy is limited to four days at the same location. He can go somewhere else in Hope Mills and still operate. He just can't post up at that one spot permanently every single day. Uh, cause I can see that becoming an issue, seven days a week, same location.
Yeah.
He gets to come at eight and he gets to leave at midnight, um, well before a regular restaurant and well after. I can see how that can become a problem.
Madam Mayor, I still have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Chancellor, I wanna make sure that, that we're clear. It's, the fee is fifty dollars annual per truck. Am I right?
Yes, not per location.
Because the way that you have this, it says the zoning permit fees for the operation of food trucks shall be an annual fee of fifty dollars.
Meaning when you.
It's not detailed of truck or owner, location. It just says.
Basically, that was a response to, my initial goal was fifty dollars per location, but after testimony from some of the food truck owners, I think you guys moved to a one-time fee. Yeah, where we're saying.
So which way is it though?
If you're coming in town, you have four locations. That's a fifty dollar fee for the permit for that one truck.
That's what he was asking though, if I own two trucks.
Yeah, no.
Then that's two separate.
That's why he asked.
Per truck, yeah. No, I'll add that in there.
That needs to be added.
I agree.
Fifty dollars per truck.
Cause you do, we do have a commissary here that has several trucks with it. And so if you permit that one person, then you've permitted.
And I'll tell you how this will start to, uh, catch on. Um, initially, you're always gonna have some pushback from the brick and mortars. And then you see the business deals that are created because the brick and mortars know that the food trucks need a commissary. So we do have one, uh, restaurant in town, and I think at least six, um...
We have two restaurants that are commissaries in town.
That's what I'm getting at. So now you could slowly start to see the taco guy making arrangements with me, Casillas, maybe. I think that's a good thing. That's one reason why I say I think we should be careful with thinking that there's a, um, a volatile relationship. Usually in the beginning, yes, but once things begin to operate, you have people just joining business with each other. Um, but I can see how more commissaries may expand this out to be, uh, to the point where you're allowing a whole lot more. So, um, that's where the system of controls, um, have to be put in place. And then after this goes live, if we start seeing some trends where we may have to come back and strengthen this a little bit more, once this is adopted, it's like any other ordinance. So just like we're, uh, making amendments to the signed ordinance, if a year from now we start finding out there are some things we didn't think about at this loca, at this point, we can come back and strengthen this ordinance a little bit more.
Madam Mayor, last question, one, the last one. Could we, looking at the hours of operation, could we agree on maybe a, one universal hours of operation? Stent of eight to midnight and eight to nine? Could we just agree eight to maybe ten?
That's up to you guys.
Can we just agree eight to ten? On hours of operation?
Well, again, that's gonna impede on the Barcade and Dirtbag ails. Uh, well Dirtbag has to close at ten, I think, but the Barcade stays open at one or two in the morning. And you just have to ask yourself the question.
Yeah.
Eight to nine then?
Safety issue, I think.
You wanna go eight to nine?
I mean, you've got eight to midnight and then you've got, that's A. B is eight to nine for any food truck located at two hundred feet from a residential dwelling.
I agree with the universal hour operation.
Everybody would know what that is, no matter where you are.
I don't know that I want a food truck operating until ten o'clock in, close to my neighborhood. Just gonna say, I think the nine o'clock for the residential is sufficient, but.
Make it eight to nine across or you wanna keep it like it is?
The, the reason why I put the tiered, uh, approach is because if someone was able to go a little bit closer to the residential area. The, the reason why I put the tiered approach is because if someone was able to go a little bit closer to the residential areas. Then, then that time should be massaged down. If you guys wanna maybe from eight to nine and from eight to midnight, maybe it's eight to ten, eight to eleven, that's up to you. I mean, there is no universal ordinance that locked in everybody at one specific time. I actually, uh, one of you people recall, my first one said two AM. I see, I saw one that said four AM, now, these are in more of your metropolitan areas where, and just to be honest, if I'm leaving a nightclub or a bar. You're getting it back, I want a burger or something, and it's two o'clock in the morning, I can get that. I don't know if we have enough establishments here in Hope Mills that would fit that category. But that's where I think you're getting the four AM operating times, but. Every municipality has different hours, and I think you guys just go whatever you see fit.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, uh, I tend to agree with Commissioner Bellflower's on a set time. Whatever the board decides or, or staff decides to, to recommend. That way everybody knows what it is coming in.
I agree.
You know, I can't open till eight, we know we have to close at night. I don't care if we're sitting out by ourselves, or if we're sitting over here where, next to Melissa's house.
One universal time.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
I just think it's easier for, for the food trucks tonight.
Well, you just go with the noise ordinance, it's the same. If you're concerned about the noise, well, you just go with the noi- noise ordinance times seven in the morning to ten tonight. Cause if you play, if you play loud rock and roll, uh, why can't you have your food truck, I mean.
Do we have food trucks that early?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know.
It just depends, um, I can see somebody doing something like a, uh.
I guess you could have a breakfast food truck.
Nah, they day it, they are. Um, what I'm getting at is, let's say you have some type of, um, some type of event, like a walk or something like that.
Seven to ten?
Would that be okay with you all, same as a noise ordinance?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Hours of operation, seven AM to ten?
I was more, I was looking at more and more, I said, more or less at the ten mark, but, but uh, Mayor Pro Tim, I'll, we'll, we'll give an extra hour to get to ten.
Seven to ten.
Yeah.
Seven to ten.
You can cut your grass at seven in the morning if you have to, which you should be this time of year.
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, I don't see why we have to mirror Fayetteville on everything. Let's make our own tracks in the sand on things that we wanna do out here, and let somebody follow us. Let's tell us following somebody else's footsteps. It seems like everything we do is around Fayetteville. I don't wanna be just like Fayetteville, I don't, we're Hope Mills, I want us to be. Our own persons out here, that we can set our own standards and have people say, well, I like to be like Hope Mills. That, that's what I would like to see, so, but every time we do something, it's like.
I think, I think Fayetteville is two AM, I think. Yeah, Fayetteville is a lot, so my point is, I say that to say, I look at Pinehurst, I look at Aberdeen, I look at uh, Eastover, and I look at Fayetteville. And I look at Cary, I look at Holly Springs, I look at Greensboro, so it gives me a wide range. And uh, I just want, I typically do that with every ordinance, whether it's the signs, whether it's food trucks, whether subdivisions, to get examples of how other municipalities treat these things. But the goal is to find something that is universal that works for Hope Mills, so I agree that we need to be setting our own path. But sometimes we look at other areas to see what trends that you can um, possibly mirror. But just like uh, with the massage, the distances, I looked at Fayetteville, um, general distances, but I looked at them and said, you know what? We need to be a little bit stronger than that with our ordinance, so sometimes you're using them as a guide. I very rarely mir- very rarely mirror Fayetteville because they're a much bigger town than us, but um, you can get some things from studying um, all the municipal ordinances.
Well, and I think the, the, where we're heading now is that you're gonna see a more unified group of, of Cumberland County, unified cities. And we're probably gonna come, probably gonna end up with a Cumberland County food truck ordinance.
Yeah.
Because right now, you know, as soon as you, there's a little donut hole here in Hope Mills, and that's Cumberland County, and there's no regulations. And then, you know, you go another step and you're in Fayetteville, so I think what we're probably gonna be faced with is, it's gonna have to be something regulated by the whole county.
Yeah.
Because of how close we are to each other, but I agree, you know, um, hours of operation, if they're the same, then it makes it easy. You don't have to worry about checking distance or where you are close to a tank, a resident or anything, yes, ma'am?
Mayor Warner, um, we have, there's a couple instances though, that um, there's areas located um, right outside of town that's still in city limits. But say like it's on a farm, or it's on, um, where there's no redit- residential areas around it. And they do have a lounge and they have parties and stuff. And they don't close until twelve or one, and the food trucks there. Will they still be allowed to do that, or do they have to close up everything at ten?
This is where it gets tricky. Um, Commissioner Legg said something about this e- uh, earlier, because even with the sign stuff, um, just in my, no life that I have, sometimes I ride around Hope Mills on Saturdays to see what kinda stuff I can see. I don't have the authority to enforce on weekends or after five, so that becomes very interesting or critical if. Cause you know, I'll get a phone call about that one. Um, someone was open to two AM at this possible location. Um, so maybe I need to talk to Dan about some teeth in this. That basically talks about some penalties or something like that, if I do find. Um, because one way you can um, regulate them and to handle that is basically uh, the threat of revocation of your permits to be able to operate in Hope Mills. Um, if you're not operating according to the guidelines, or you're operating where it seems that you're deliberately. Operating in a way where you know the enforcement can't be regulated because you're on a weekend or, or um.
We can still do the, the, like the sound noise from seven to ten, but like you say, a lot of times giving olive branch out to those. In particular, I mean, there would be a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
But the ones that do operate like that, extend it open, that they can stay open later. Not universal, not for everybody, but the ones that fall under this.
I, I will say, um, the ordinance itself is a major step forward, but there are no questions that are being asked that are not typical of any new municipality that is moving forward with this type of use. It's gonna become, and I'm not saying that I want it to, but two years from now, it may be a major issue in the county. Because people get smart, okay, I can operate in Hope Mills past ten, I can go down the street and. You know, so this, but, but my point is that's typical as well in terms of um, people finding an ordinance and finding loopholes and ways to go around it. That's why I said, we basically just need to make sure we understand that at some point, we may notice some things that at a later day. I'm looking at subdivision uh, overhauls right now, um, just based on the things I've seen in the last year. I was talking to Melissa ironically today about uh, possibly asking you guys to allow me to move forward with some of those, and that's just me noticing trends and things of that nature. You don't wanna make an overhaul or change the ordinance very frequently, but in the case of, of what she was saying, in three or four years, if you start finding out this is becoming a major issue. Where you have food trucks from Hope Mills all the way to Spring Lake, everywhere, then you, you, you may need to do something a little bit more aggressive. Um, but I think that's up to the discretion of the board.
Yep.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
How have we addressed the location of a food truck near a church or a school during their operating hours?
Um, from my understanding, I haven't seen any ordinance uh, that I studied that had regulations that govern that. It's usually your residential areas, now ironically, most churches are zone residential anyway. But most of the distance requirements are tied to fire hydrants, sidewalks where you have pedestrians operating, other um, brick and mortar restaurants and other food trucks. I haven't seen any of the eight or nine that I looked at that regulated the distance from churches or schools.
It's gonna happen sooner or later.
I know, I got a friend that has a food truck that goes to church regular.
Well, I mean ironically, um, there are a lot of schools that actually.
I'm talking about doing business on the lot.
Next door.
I mean, without her permission or?
Oh, yeah, I'm just doing business on the church lot.
I mean, all these ordinances are all right, but if we don't have any teeth in them, it's just like uh, skateboarding in Hope Mills, it's like uh, the speedboat down in Hope Mills Lake on Sunday. What's it all about?
The key is enforcement.
There you go.
Gotta have the teeth, I do think I should probably, I'll send Dan some language tomorrow on the penalty, yeah.
Gotta have the teeth.
So anything else on food trucks? Alrighty, so we'll shut down food trucks and move on to signs.
We don't have very much time to work on signs.
I suppose start at six.
All right.
Signs start at six right now, no, right in there, go right into it.
Um, now as we transition to. Your sign ordinance, um, what you have is two uh, documents. You have the actual PowerPoint that I'm giving you to go through now, but what I did is I gave you the actual ordinance with the track changes. Uh, Commissioner Bellflower was asked at the last work session, how do you know what changes are being made and where as it relates to the existing ordinance? So the difference between this and the food trucks, this is an existing ordinance we're amending. So what I wanted to do, to do is take you through an exercise where I went through every single amendment, page by page, section by section. Sounds like a lot, but it's not nearly as much because we only really um, focused on ground signs, square footages, heights and things of that nature. Um, but it makes, it's, it makes sense for you to be able to see, all right, section fourteen oh five X Y and Z. This is the language, or this is the section of the ordinance that we're actually striking down pole signs, uh, and things of that nature. So I'll start here. Um, in terms of work.
Post the page number so we can.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's in here as well. Um, in terms of work sessions and where we are now, the July ninth, twenty eighteen work session, staff presented potential amendments to the town of Hope Mills sign ordinance. Town Board of Commissioners instructed staff to move forward with changes in the following areas of the ordinance. Ground signs, billboards, civil penalties, five-year compliance periods, and waiving of fees. Again, as I just stated, for the following amendments to the town of Hope Mills sign ordinance, staff will highlight the page number of each change, the ordinance section being amended, and the proposed new language. Let's get started, page two. Flip over to page two, section one oh two A, fourteen oh two M, definition of signs, which is pole, definition of pole sign. Ultimately, what you, I had to do here is when you're making a change to an existing ordinance, you have to make sure that you vet that change throughout the entire ordinance. To see where you may need to make a change to strike something out or to add something else. If we are, the board is uh, moving forward with ground signs only, then technically you're saying that pole signs are no longer permitted. Um, so that section is simply being removed, which is what you see in red highlighted in terms of the, uh, it being stricken, um, stricken down. Um, Commissioner uh, Mitchell, Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, if you also notice at the bottom of page two, where it says adopted October twenty, if you had asked that question, I'm striking that out. And the date that I'll add will be the date of the official adoption of this, so that especially if we're talking about that five-year period, or if someone wants to know, when was this ordinance specifically amended? It'll actually be stamped directly uh, on the ordinance. Next, flip over to page seven. You're looking at one oh two A dash fourteen oh five C, freestanding sign, the location. Um, in that section, there's a sentence that speaks to signs between three and fifteen feet in height. If we're going with ground signs, and I'm definitely not proposing anything uh, at fifteen feet in height, so that section simply needs to be taken out. Um, the language that um, will remain was, would say, in no, and this is, and this language is already in there. In no instance shall sign be permitted within twenty feet of right of way, of a right of way line at the intersection of two streets. That language is not new, that's just what's left when you take out that little clause that allows for signs between three and fifteen feet in height. The fact, again, if we're moving down the ground signs, there's no need to have that language in there, cause it conflicts. All right, flip over to page eight, this is where it gets interesting. Um, you're taking out in four, section one oh two A dash fourteen oh five C one for ground signs. You're removing the language, there's language that says maximum height is thirty feet. You're taking that out, and then you're simply just stating and referencing the table that's right below it that says. The maximum allowable height is outlined in the table below unless otherwise allowed in section one oh two A fourteen oh seven. The reason why that's left in there is because that's the billboard section. Again, we're regulating billboards to someone else, but there are no height restrictions in that section, so you had to reference that because it'll be a conflict if you don't. All right, this is probably the most interesting change of all. Um, this is where we're ultimately stating what our new heights are. This is section one oh two A dash fourteen oh five C one for ground signs. This will establish the new heights, before you had a thirty-foot height, and people uh, don't realize either. Um, you hear a lot of backlash when we're talking about this, this change. Um, we did a drastic change with the last ordinance in May of la- um, March of last year, we went from no height limitations to thirty feet. Nothing happened. I don't, I can't recall any permit that came in, in the last year that had any issues, so we went from no sign height limitations down to thirty. So with us going down um, to this is ground signs, which you're also gonna see later in various sections of the code. If I'm going down to three foot, four foot, five foot and six foot sign heights, that automatically triggers a requirement that I reduce the square footages. For those uh, allowable um, signs as well, because you have a current max just in C one P of a hundred square feet. Hundred square foot sign does not look that big at thirty feet in there. You drop that down to five feet, that's a wall. That'll be five feet by twenty feet wide. So to make it relative in scale, you'll see the square footages of the institutional um, commercial and industrial and residential areas. Um, I'm capping them at three feet in height, five foot setback, but you'll see those square footages in those areas reduced down. Um, O N I P is being uh, capped down to four feet in height, five foot setbacks, and if you notice, as the height increases, I'm increasing the setback as well. Um, but in the O N I P, you'll see the corresponding uh, square footages that have been changed later in the presentation. C one P is at five feet in high, ten feet setback, C two P and CP, five foot height, ten foot setback. M one P um, is six foot, fifteen foot um, setback, same thing as MP. Now, if you flip over, we're still on page eight, I'm removing the entire section for pole signs. Again, if we're going with ground signs, they're eliminating pole signs, so that entire section is being um, taken out. That section, one oh two A fifteen oh, uh, fourteen oh five C two. Staying on page eight, this was, um, Commissioner Lawson um, spoke about maintenance of signs. There was already a s- a maintenance uh, area in the ordinance, I just added to that. So what you're seeing is, I'm not striking anything down, I'm adding language. This is page eight, section one oh two A dash fourteen oh five D for maintenance and appearance. I'm amending the language to state, um, to ensure that all signs are maintained in an attractive and safe manner to follow requirements and proposals for all signs visible from any public or private street or right of way. Signs should not stand or with bent or broken sign facing with broken supports for more than twenty degrees vertical, or for appearing not to seat five days. Signs should not be obstructed by weeds or vegetation and for thirty days unless that is a part of the landscaping for the sign. Um, disfigured, ripped, peeling and cracked signs should not be permitted for more than thirty days. That's a, a vital one because it allows me to regulate the condition of a sign. Um, continuing on the bottom of page eight and going over to um, page nine. Four says, all signs tied to the same development um, shall be compatible with the unified architectural theme of the buildings found on site. Flip over to page nine, five and six state that uh, the signs shall be uniform between the ground sign and wall signs, and all signs shall be uh, constructed by professional sign. Um, what I didn't add is, if you recall, you guys, um, the original work sessions spoke to colors and materials and things of that nature, I think you guys backed off of that. So these were um, the things that we added for maintenance and appearance. Staying on page nine, um, unsafe and unlawful signs, this was the teeth section where um, Dan helped me out a great deal. With respect to um, one of our issues that were not even tied. one of our issues that were not even tied to ground signs was just how crazy and notorious, um, the illegal signs you see at the intersections are. And we've gotten even more aggressive picking them up, and they're getting creative, you know, fifteen feet in the air, drilling them in the wood and light poles. So this is our civil penalty section. Um, the key is that, if you go to the bottom, it says, one, once the sign has been removed by the town staffer as a result of violation of this ordinance, any additional legal signs erected by the same business entity or persons shall be considered a class three misdemeanor and shall be subj- subject to a civil penalty of five hundred dollars as authorized by general statute. Each day's containment violation shall be considered a separate and distinct offense. This does not mean you're gonna get hit just for your sign. But there's this one guy, we took down twenty on Friday, there were thirty back on Monday, and they're fifteen feet up, drilled inside a wooden poles. That applies to him. This doesn't apply to, um, your, well, it does apply to the same pressure washing guy at Camden and Hope Mills Road, or the same mattress guy. Um, this is repeat offenders, and what we were noticing is that, it, it may blow your mind, we may pick up sixty signs on a Friday afternoon in an hour. Sixty seven more the following Friday, sixty seven more the following Friday. So, um, that doesn't mean there are the same signs, but some of them are getting a little bit ridiculous. That's what this section is for.
The teeth chancellor.
Stay, staying on page nine and going on to ten, uh, cessation of, um, purpose and removal. Um, this is, uh, a, another critical piece, you can tr- uh, move over to page, uh, ten. There was already a section in here that spoke to that. Um, that was typically what we would call the grandfather section. But when we talked about the five year amortization period, this new language basically states that, let's say this ordinance goes live, or went live on, uh, July seventeenth, then a five year period from that date, every single sign in the town of Hope Mills would need to comply immediately. The five year period gives them a notification because once this goes live, I did send out, uh, good grief, it was about over five hundred, uh, mail outs when we first started, just to let everybody know, hey, we're gearing up to make some changes. If this officially goes forward, especially with this language in it, um, I will go to great lengths doing massive amounts of mail outs, and I did do a, several door to door for some of the ones along Main, um, Hope Mills Road, just to let them know, please understand, this has been adopted, everybody in the town is under this because that five year period will creep up a lot quicker than you know. And at that point, we're coming to them saying, your sign has to be removed immediately, and it has to, has to be brought into compliance with this new ordinance. I'm not saying, but this is basically what that five year amortization period, if you recall, um, we consulted with the school of government. They said the average period was three to five, I think you guys moved with five to give them a little bit more time. But the spirit of this period is to give them a five year period to recoup revenues so that if you're a small business, the sign will be expensive but a lot cheaper than a Lowe's sign. But everybody from Lowe's to a small mom and pop would have five years to, to actually save up some of those revenues, um, to be able to comply with it. Um, but that's basically where we are with that particular period.
Can I comment on that a second? I have some concerns. And I know your earlier, Commissioner Larson told me I was comparing apples and oranges or something like that. If I get a permit, and this is different, to build me a house, and it passes all the inspections and everything, and you come up with an ordinance change, that my foundation's wrong. And you give me five years to change it, is that fair? Cause I, I did what you asked me to do when I put it up. We've got new businesses in town that's gonna, if this ordinance passes, that's gonna have to change those signs in five years, and they just put them up. So.
Um, I, and we spoke about this earlier, I agree, um, with, I understand your, your point in that, um, without any language, any adoption of new regulation or this automatically grandfathers everything that's not in compliance. To the point where you only have to comply if it's destroyed more than fifty percent or it's out of operation. Uh, but whichever route you guys wanted to take is at your discretion. I think the reason why this was put in there is because we're trying to get a little bit more aggressive. Um, but if you guys want to respond to some of the, the feedback that you've been hearing from business owners and you wanna massage this a little bit, you can. If you feel that you wanna stay aggressive, you keep it where it is. I think that, I think it's a very valid point you bring up. Um, and I think it's up to you guys, whichever direction you wanna go.
I mean, it's, it's a, it, it's a touchy situation, and I, I agree with that. But you got a lot of mom and pop businesses that's gonna be challenged. I mean, someone like Lowe's or Target or somewhere like that may be able to afford something like that, changing a sign in five years. But a little mom and pop business that make it from day to day, uh, probably, even, Mayor Warner probably have financial burden if she has to change her sign.
Not only that, if you make me drop mine down that low, I can't, you won't be able to see me.
But my, my thought is, if it's grandfathered, it's grandfathered. If a hurricane blows it down, tears it up, if electrical shorts out and blows it up, and they have to have another permit, then they gotta come in compliance. But those are just my ideas, and may not be the ideas of this board, uh, to come into, to the area where we wanna end up being. Uh, I got a call this week, the, earlier this week, somebody spent forty thousand dollars on a sign. Now he's gotta turn around and spend another approximately forty thousand dollars again. Is that fair? Probably not, in my opinion. I, I would, when I was in business, I couldn't afford to put another sign up every five years. Especially when I already put it up according to the directions and the guidelines that you gave me to start with. Cause you know, if I had to put a sign up, I was concentrating on making sure this is right so it'll pass inspection.
Well.
You tell me I got five years to.
Well, one thing that, that, um, has been on my, in the back of my brain is, this will ultimately require, um, a massive tracking system. Because we're saying five years from today, that's every business is here today. Every business that comes after today, that five year period starts when they come. I'm not sure, like, you, you, if you're talking about giving every business a five year period, I can't come to a business that's coming in four years and say, you got a year.
They would, they would automatically have to meet the, the ordinance.
Well, yeah, 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 you're right, you're right, you're right.
Commissioner Edwards.
Um, after all the discussion and everything, and I've had some phone calls myself, and, um, I think we oughta just, um, do away with the five year. And the rest of the, the merchants that's been here forever and ever, whether it're mom and pops or, or whatever, let it not apply to them, but any new business, set up the new ordinance.
Now, that's, and, and I stand corrected what I just said, but that was basically would be the standard if we didn't add any of this in here. Anything new that comes after the adoption of it would have to comply, anything, um, prior to its grandfathering. And that's the same way we did, uh, subdivision ordinance with respect to sidewalks. That one gets very complicated because it's tied to the, the approval of the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, when you see a, when you see a McDonald's sign, that's what you look for, you don't look one, from one lower down, and they all have their own signs that, that you recognize from a distance, and I just think everything should be left the way it is and have the ordinance. Cause we didn't have the ordinance when these people came to start with, as far as their signs and all.
I agree.
So if it's something we're starting now, we should start right now in all the new ones, not the old ones.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Without question, I think most of us have received phone calls this week out of concerns about, some of this goes right with the five year period of compliance. And years ago, before, before the, uh, the two thousand eight, there was no enforcement, there was no sign ordinance. There wasn't anything. And tremendous amount of business owners that chose Hope Mills would have complied then if there had been some type of ordinance. But when this thing was reviewed, well, a year ago, uh, there's been no, not much change to it then. But a lot of business owners that did establish their business here have been here for years. And they believe it's, it's unfair to tack on a five year period. It is gonna be a tremendous tracking system for the staff, namely you, to, to go after and see who's gonna comply and who's not. There was another issue brought up too, was like, well, if you adopt this ordinance, and you take out the five rule for the existing businesses, and eventually the new bi- the new businesses coming in will comply with this. But what if the existing business changes ownership?
That's a new business.
Yeah, cause when that new owner comes in, it's a new sign.
And, and that was, that was a key point that was brought up in the discussions that I had with some folks this weekend. Is that if you got an existing business, give them the grandfather. But if they change ownership, then they have to comply with the new ordinance.
Well, you have to be careful there.
Yeah, that's a little different too.
If you sell your corporation and you stock, isn't that, the corporation owns the sign, but you change shareholders.
One thing I would temper with that one though, if Robbins on Main, um, changes ownership, but the business is still called Robbins on Main, that's not a new sign. If Robbins on Main shuts down and another restaurant comes back, it's still a restaurant, but they would need a new sign because the sign can't remain the same. So I don't think you would require it, it'd be changed just because the ownership changed, if the business changed, which required the sign to be changed, and that new sign would have to comply.
Anytime, anytime a business needs a permit for a sign, anytime.
That's my point. Change in ownership is not gonna make them actually come get a new sign.
If the, you know, if the sign is there and, and y'all choose to grandfather it in, then they wouldn't need to update the sign unless until they sought a permit for us, another sign. Whether it be because that sign was destroyed, or whether it be because they wanna change the sign, or whatever it may be. But that, that would be the best way to probably do it without worrying about any, you know, treating businesses differently. Because you're just saying, starting today, if you seek a permit for a sign, these are the rules.
That's an easy way to look at it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to suggest that we come to, uh, a consensus, as Commissioner Edwards was saying, that we just, grandfather's grandfather, it's, it's already there, let's don't make them change it. But if somebody comes in and applies for a new permit, then they have to go with the new rules.
It's the same, um, rebuttal I give to developers who hate the side, what they call sidewalks to nowhere. You're requiring sidewalks to come in, there's nothing on the left, nothing to the right. But when, in the future, when another development comes in adjacent to you, they have to tie in. It may not sound like a lie over the first year after this ordinance, where you only get three new businesses to come in, they have to comply with the new ground signs. The point of it is that over a fifteen year period, you will start to see a transition of all those signs, transitioning the ground signs. Cause every new one would have to comply, and every old one that lost his grandfather clause would have to comply. That's a more, or, uh, uh, I, I would say a less aggressive way of doing it. But that's the way most ordinances operate. With any massive change, you would have to basically, uh, grandfather in everything that's, um, that's, that's up right at that point.
The board also that any business that would be opening now until this is approved.
Is before, uh.
They'll, they'll go by the old ordinance.
What's in effect now.
What's in effect now, so that, that's the other thing, I know with the sidewalks, we had some concerns because there's been a couple of places that, uh, didn't put sidewalks in, but they had their approval prior to.
That's a really, really good point. If you, there are four subdivisions, I was actually talking about this ironically sometime today, and this is where, it's just, it's not a headache for me, but this is where that tracking comes in. Cause I track subdivisions based on sidewalks. Valley Inn One, Georgetown Estates, no sidewalks. Because of the, I think those were the two developments that triggered the ordinance change. Blacks Bridge Village came in at the same time in terms of their approval as Valley Inn One, but they didn't meet the threshold, they met the threshold where they required sidewalks, but at the time sidewalks were only required on both sides. But they didn't start construction until about a year ago. So even though they started construction after the major overhaul that required sidewalks on both sides, they got their approval prior to. So I had to make sure I was mindful of that approval date. Now, every, now Valley Inn Two came in after, they got sidewalks on both sides. So it, it's, uh, appears to be all over the place in, to the general public, but to me, that tracking system allows me, um, I have two, um, permits on my desk right now for Black Bridge Village, and I have a permit, I have a tracking system and a mapping system where I can look at those particular two properties inside Black Bridge Village because it only requires sidewalks on one side. So based on the approved subdivision, this particular house may require sidewalk, this particular house may not. Um, so that is very crucial, and I, and it would take, it would take the same methodology with, with this.
So really, the thing that, the, with these amendments that we've got, the main language that we would want to go back to change would be, um,
The five year period.
Just remove the five year period.
I'll just remove that. Basically take everything back to.
So I believe the, the only, um, is there any, anything else? I know that.
Madam Mayor, I had two items.
Yes, okay.
Um, I, I apologize, I didn't get to mention the last time we got so entranced with the, uh, commercial signs. So I like, I like to believe in enforceable ordinances. So, uh, last election, we had the, uh, election signs on page six, item six. I called the board of elections myself, talked to Terry Robertson, the rest of the entire county. Put up your campaign signs at five o'clock PM, throughout the entire county except for here on town property. We had to wait till midnight, which.
Yeah, 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 I remember that.
And to be hon- and to be honest, people out there at ten, eleven o'clock putting them up, and it's not like the police are gonna ticket anybody anyways. But I just like us to be in, um, I think that should be the same as the county rules. If they, if they allow them at five o'clock, um, throughout the rest of the county, then that should be the same on our town property. That's just one out of my head, and then another.
I, I think that would become, uh, I agree with that because during a period for early voting, where you can vote any, anywhere.
You can give up the whole time.
Yeah, um, that keeps everything consistent with the same way we were talking about with the food truck.
Page seven, talking about sandwich boards, item, is that, oh. Anyways, we're, we're limiting sandwich boards to just the trade street business district, but yet Millstone Village, all the shopping centers put out sandwich boards for their lunch special, and it's not like our police are gonna go there and cite the business for, uh, a proper sandwich board. I, I just want these ordinances to be something that's common sense and is non prejudicial. That, uh, you know, why would we penalize the other businesses in town not to have sandwich boards at lunchtime?
To that one, I would say, um, the sandwich board inclusion was part of the change we made in March. And I think it wasn't that we had issues with sandwich board signs or we didn't want them. I think we were just focusing on Trade Street because that's our historic district, which will be officially live tonight. Um, my point is, that's why we just said Trade Street area, because the sidewalk on Trade Street is so small that a sandwich board, uh, sign had to be regulated to a small size, just size to be able to put there. But I don't think that would be an issue with just allowing sandwich board si- uh, signs townwide. If you also recall, um, you brought up a very good point because I'm allowing sandwich board signs for the food truck.
Right, right.
So we may have to go take out the language that only allows them in historical areas. But what I would do is play a, pay a close, put a close eye on it, because if all of a sudden we got Sandwich Board City around, then that would be something that I would probably temper, but I, I do note your point, it's a very good point in terms of the consistency.
I mean, they're only permitted during business hours.
So they have to take it back in.
It's on a sidewalk typically.
Yeah.
So we would be removing signs permitted only within Trade Street Business District.
Yeah.
Keep the condition, sandwich board signs permitted with the following conditions.
Now, the condition was stay the same, we would just take out the section that they're only allowed in Trade Street.
Alright, another one. Um, I have one that was brought to my attention. Um, I have one that was brought to my attention. And that is, I know y'all, they call, they called them feather signs. Uh, yeah, we've called them banana signs, banana boats, or whatever.
Flag signs.
Flag signs. You, we've got names for them. They called them the feather signs. And the reason being is, uh, Exxon called me because
They got a lot.
they use, they've got their signs out, because anytime they have a promotion, they use those as their promotion. So they don't have a problem taking them down. Like right now, the prom- their promotion is changing from the Plenti car to the Exxon Plus and the new Synergy, uh, Speed Fast Pass. So they've got them up and they're allowed, they, all over North Carolina, because that's what they use. But in the way our ordinance is going to read is, you can only have them for the grand openings and they can only stay up two weeks.
Grand opening for two weeks.
So their concern is, is there a way of, are putting language there that yes, we take them down over the, after that promotion, which it wouldn't just be a grand open promotion, it would be something like they do.
Sales or some, I think you're getting a lot of, uh, grocery stores that have the, uh, mobile curbside pickup. They'll, you'll see a flag signs for that. Typically, um, my experience with flag signs here, I don't necessarily have a problem with them. But before the most recent change in March of last year, they were prohibited outright anywhere. So I got the board to actually soften that stance, and that's where you got the language that said, can we, because I was hearing from businesses as well, and most of them said, can you give us some leeway? So what the board actually did approve was a little bit of misogynist says, you can have the sandwich board signs, just tie the grand openings for two weeks. But if you want that to be extended a little bit, I do think, my main issue with this flag signs, or not the signs themselves, is the ones that look terrible and they won't take them down. But the maintenance section that we've just added covers that.
Covers that.
So if you guys feel that that sufficiently addresses the poorly maintained flag signs, then maybe you massage off of this, but I would at least say, I wouldn't say just make them allowable just outright, but tie them to something to where it keeps it as a temporary sign that you have to get a permit for, but for that sale, it makes you come get a permit for that sign. So that now I can regulate the timing of it. Um, but I, I understand your point. I was, I just wanted you to know that the, um,
We don't want them.
language that prohibits them is not because we don't want them at all. The language that does allow them for grand openings was me trying to get a little bit of leeway. If you feel like we need a little bit more, um, I can explore some language.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would it help any if we required those signs to have a different setback from the curb? Um, or am I getting clear off base with this? We're, we're talking about signs for, um, promotion. Just want everybody to be treated equally.
I think, um, I would have to add language, two, two answers to that question. I would have, 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 I would have to add language that exempt them from the heights. Because you're not, if you had a five-foot tall ground flag sign, you might not even have one. Um, but it's a temporary sign, which is not meant to be permanent. Um, but I would push back a little bit on setting them back too far, because the nature of why they're putting them there is so they're curbside.
But sometimes they block the view of drivers at intersections, you know?
Now, that I agree with. Uh, we do have the section in there that does not allow them at two intersecting streets with twen- within twenty, um, feet. That's like a site triangle. Same thing in, um, the sign ordinance for political signs and things of that nature. Again, I think we look at what systems you have in place and see if it can address certain things. But it sounds like from the mayor's, um, comment, you're wanting a little bit more misogynist, but I think Mrs. Lawson may want to.
So I, I understand why we would get some kickback from business owners and developers, but what about our citizens that are tired of seeing it all? I mean, I, I feel like we're kind of losing sight that that's a complaint with the citizens. They don't want to see those flags all up and down Main Street. They don't want to see, you know, three and four signs on their businesses and, and they want the area cleaned up. And if we allow it for one business, how do you not say it for another?
That's when it becomes a headache for me.
I mean, it's dominoes. If one person sees it up on a Saturday at Exxon, you're going to tell me that McDonald's is going to say, or Truffit Gym. They, you know, I see it all the time. So, you know, it's kind of, it's one way or the other. We can't play favoritisms with food trucks. We can't play favoritisms with signs. It has to be equal across the board. But we're kind of losing sight of what our citizens want as well as cleaning up.
I, I definitely see your point, and I think you're speaking to the balance that we try to strike with any change of an ordinance, especially some sweeping changes. Where's the middle ground? If we're speaking to businesses, uh, and their need to have them, but we're also trying to respond to complaints from the community, ultimately, where's the middle ground? Um, is the current language that allows them okay? Or can it be massaged a little bit more, but not to the point where it creates a nuisance? I'm not sure. Uh, maybe I can play with some, um, language that allows for some leeway, but some type of regulatory controls a little bit more stronger. I'm not sure. But I get your point in that we're going to have people voicing their, uh, issues from both sides. Where is the middle ground that allows the concerns of the citizens to be addressed, but allows for the businesses to feel like they're not being, uh, preyed upon to a certain degree? But that's the million-dollar question, and that's ultimately what we're trying to achieve.
So when you and I spoke earlier, obviously, I am a fan of the ground signs, um, working in several other areas, seeing how it works. But one of my concerns was shopping strips, for example, Millstone and the one at one sixty-two and Hope Mills Road, where they have the taller signs, but they're advertising, you know, they've got all the businesses listed on it. And how that, how would they go about doing that where it was fair? Um, obviously, because they're having to advertise for, you know, sometimes twenty different businesses in one shopping strip.
That's where, yeah.
And for instance, Millstone, I can't see Cold Stone sign because the Mexican restaurants in front of it, so you can't see it. So that sign is important to have out there and, um, but I am also at the same point with other stores. I am a fan of the ground signs. It hasn't stopped me from going to McDonald's across from Jack Britt, because they have a ground sign.
I go there all the time. Um, but I do think, um, in response to the shopping center signs, we did not change the language or the intent of the language in that section. In your C one P and C two P sections, there's language, and you, we'll get to that when we get to the section about the square footages, where you're allowed higher allowances of the size of the sign, not the height, but the square footage, if you have between more than two businesses, but less than ten. If you have more than ten businesses, you're allowed to go up to a hundred square feet. So those in this ordinance, before it was much higher than that. So I kept the spirit of that language in place, and I just massaged down the square footages. But you are still allowed a lot more leniency on your shopping center signs as far as the square footage than you are on your individual sign. Um, I will tell you that when I say the word thirty-two square feet for commercial, and it's not going to be a popular comment, I will say, let's take a step back and look at our political signs. Your max size allowable is thirty-two square feet. If, uh, if I can use you as an example, um, your wooden sign that you put up for your campaign was in full compliance with the sign ordinance at thirty-two square feet. That is not a little sign. So even though it sounds like going from a hundred square feet to thirty-two sounds like a drastic change, that height and that size is a pretty big sign.
I actually didn't have the largest one.
You had the largest one?
I had, no, I had the second largest one. There was actually the.
I think Tonsy's is pretty big too.
The, the big long ones. So actually, there's one size large.
But my point of at that size, because that sign wasn't tremendously larger than yours, but at that size, you're still able to actually see and read things very effectively. But again, the million-dollar question is, where is the middle ground? Um, some businesses may feel that that's still pretty small, if you're talking about a place like the Millstone. But again, in the ordinance, Millstone is allowed to be a little bigger. Um, I think it, only thing I tweaked in that is just the sizes, square allowable square footage, because if we're going down the ground signs, you're almost going to have to massage down the allowable square footage, because you can't keep a hundred-square-foot sign, uh, maximum allowable, uh, square footage, and you're lowering the, the height from thirty feet down to five feet.
But Millstone's not going to be affected. Because by changing that, by changing.
Yeah, your wall signs are not going to be affected. I'm thinking maybe a place like, um, Hope Mills Marketplace, where they have the big, uh, Miami sign, where, and that sign, Hope Mills Marketplace.
But it won't be affected, because it's already there.
I'm saying something new. Now, that, they wouldn't have to take that one down, but a new shopping center that would come for, um, that sign has to be smaller.
The concerns I think we've been hearing are from the ones that are already here. Because there's thoughts where you give me five years to change a very expensive sign. But if we're not giving that five year, if we're just leaving them alone.
Then they're fine.
Then that issue is gone until a new shopping center opens.
Yes.
And the new shopping center would be faced with the requirements.
Yes, and I, 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 I didn't realize, I was speaking basically for anything, uh, coming after this, yeah.
See, like, if you, if you look at it long range now, as soon as this, this is in place, then any new shopping center, new development, they're going to have to comply with this or- ordinance. But what we've already got is, they're just, they're good to go. By taking the five years off, I think you're, and just grandfathering them in until they change purpose of the business. In other words, the whole shopping center would have to come.
I, I think you guys making the decision, um, to massage the five-year period down to just grandfathering, that will probably quell a lot of the opposition. Um, and then everybody new that comes is just required to comply.
What are we, we in workshop mode? We in meeting mode? We looking promotions? Are we looking consensus?
Right now, there's just, it had to be consensus, because you don't, until this is something that we approve, you don't have to.
Yeah, because ultimately, what I'm looking for is whatever language I ultimately dissent to the county. Because this ordinance does have to go through the county. The county has it as well. Um, um, I should have their comments back, but, um.
We got about four comments. So I guess four changes proposed.
No, I'm, I'm, they're noted. Um, yeah.
Our town attorney has something too.
Raised one issue, and Chance, I know we talked about this a while ago, but, um, there's a Supreme Court case, Reed v. Town and Gilbert, that prohibits any content-based, you know, regulation of signs. So I, I may need to look at the way we've got it laid out as far as political signs, you know, allowing political signs, but not allowing other types of signs in the same location, non-commercial signs, could be an issue.
Well, aren't the political signs a, uh?
That's what states statute, isn't it?
It's a period.
Political signs are in the temporary sign section of the ordinance.
The way we've got it, if you allow, if you allow political signs in a, in one area, you don't allow other non-commercial signs, that could be an issue under Supreme Court decisions.
Well, I think that, I, I lost you there somewhere. If, if it's in a commercial district.
You can, you can distinguish between commercial and non-commercial, and that's, that's fine. But if you're distinguishing between non-commercial uses of a sign, for example, if you allow in one particular area a, a political sign, but you don't allow other, you know, viewpoint signs that are non-commercial signs, um, that could be a content-based restriction that may not stand up to scrutiny.
So are you saying that, like, political signs would have to be on permission-based property, like a?
Well, we're really talking about, um, in public space anyway. So I, I may need to do a run-through of that particular aspect of the ordinance.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank Roger Mullin and the Pittville Observer for bringing all these issues, uh, out in the media so that the public can see them, and they've had the opportunity to, to call us or, or contact us or, or speak with us. Because if sometimes we don't, we don't know everything there is to, to decide about that stuff and to hear other people's ideas, uh, is real refreshing. So.
I think, I think the point you raised is, um, very valid, because a significant amount of what we're doing here is responding to the concerns of business and property owners, um, regardless of what those issues are. I mean, I think that's what we're doing here. So the key is to, to address those issues in the, um, best way possible. It feels that, um, you're not, like I said, you're addressing the issues of the citizens and you're protecting the business interests of the commercial establishments. But how you do it, and what way you do it is fair and equal for everyone is the million-dollar, um, goal.
The people are our bosses.
Um, yes. Uh, we got to the point that we can go ahead and do a consensus, and then they can take it and, and bring it back, but the sooner we get it approved.
Well, I, I still wanted to go through the square footages, in case you guys want to have questions on that, but, um.
Yeah, Dan's got to review it anyway. Yeah.
Okay, anyone got through the square footage, which is?
Yeah, this is the square footages. And again, this is just, um, coinciding with the reduction in height in each one of those districts. So when I made that change, I had to go to that maximum allowable square footage section for that same district and massage it down. So in your institutional commercial, on page eleven, uh, one oh two A, fourteen oh six A, four A, institutional commercial industrial signs located in residential or conservancies, those are like churches. Uh, most people don't realize, most of your churches are in residential areas. But the allowable square footage would go down to sixteen square feet in area. But again, this is not your typical McDonald's or Lowe's establishment. This is your small, um, type of operation. Flip over to page eleven, um.
Oh, you're saying a church sign can't be more than four by four?
Basically, the methodology is that the less intensity of the permitted uses in the district, the smaller the sign. So naturally, you wouldn't have a sixteen-square-foot sign in a C two P. But the type of businesses that operate in your institutional, commercial, industrial signs located in residential conservancies are your small operations. You're talking about possibly a church. You're talking about maybe, uh, a certain type of school. Your major schools have to be on commercial. But if you have a small operation, um, and again, I'm not locked into sixteen. This is me studying the, the area and realizing if we're going down, if you recall, we're going down to a three-foot height in this particular, um, district based on the, the, the table that we introduced. This appeared to be an average size. If you guys wanted to extend that, that's about a four-foot by four-foot sign. If you guys wanted, and this is, this goes for every square footage that I'm going to introduce. If you guys felt maybe that's too small, can you increase that a little bit? I'm open to that as well. Standing on page eleven, uh, your signs permitted in O N I P, that's your office and institutional daycare centers, um, law offices that are in residence. If you look at this property right on the corner of Rockfish and, um, Goffview, that was approved by the Board of Adjustment for a daycare. That's on office and institutional. You'd have a twenty-four, uh, square-foot sign, um, for that particular, um, district.
And when we're saying sign.
The size, the size of it.
About the actual body of the sign, not the framing.
Yeah, the square. Well, and, and you're talking about the overall square footage. Now, in this, uh, sign ordinance, there is already a section that talks about the computation of the sign area, because you have so many of your types. If you're talking about a, uh, your typical square sign, then naturally, the twenty-four square foot is just whatever multiplied. But if you have your channel letter signs, there are areas in the ordinance that talks about the way you compute the area of that sign.
I mean, if you got masonry, you know, masonry bricks on each end can be two feet sometimes.
Then if I'm that owner and I know I'm only capped at twenty-four feet, then I'm not going to use too much masonry. That, that's, that's really up to you. Now, Pinehurst, ironically, you brought that, that, uh, point up. Pinehurst has regulations that talk about the thickness of the masonry unit for the signs. Dead serious. It's funny you brought that up.
I mean, the masonry are the better-looking sign.
I agree, but I thought putting that in there was getting too aggressive, because if you recall, we backed off of materials and colors and things of that nature, so I didn't want to put that in there. That is a good, uh, point. Um, it would basically force people, uh, not to get too creative. But again, this is only on your office and institutional uses, um, which are basically, uh, offices and, um, dentists and, and, um, daycare centers, um, and residentially, um, with, with, with instructions that appear to be residential in nature. Uh, but that property on the corner is a perfect example of what type of business we're talking about. If you look at the other end of Goffview, on Goffview and Main, uh, those two properties right down that corner, those is on office and institutional as well. So you're not talking about a major operation. Another thing you have to point out is, I have to point out as well is, many times, you may not have a business that want a sign. I mean, someone doing a, a daycare center, they're not trying to get a hundred-square-foot sign. It's probably too expensive. So some of these are relative. The question that I have for you guys is to, when do we determine that this may be too small? And if you're raising these concerns, maybe we bump this up to thirty-two square feet. I'm not sure. And if you're raising these concerns, maybe we bump this up to thirty-two square feet, I'm not sure, but if.
Like the office building my practices in, we have eight businesses.
Now, is yours on commercial, law office and institution?
O, O N P, I think.
I can, I can confirm that, I thought that was on commercial, if I'm not mistaken, but, um. Because then if yours on commercial, that's where your multiple businesses come in, and the allowances and things of that nature. Staying on page eleven, now we're talking about C one P. Um, your square footage would be thirty-two square feet in areas for sites with a maximum of five occupants. Fifty square foot max for sites more than five occupants. This is what I mean by the more businesses you have, you're allowed to massage up that square footage. The intent of that language did not change. The only thing I changed was the square footage amount. Um, I think the original was a hundred square feet, so I just took half of that. Because if you're thinking about it, you're lowering it down from a thirty foot allowable sign to about a five foot. Um, so reducing it in half didn't appear to be that, um, drastic of a change. But I would go back to Commissioner Lawson's campaign sign as an example. Um, I thought that was a huge sign, um, compared to your typical signs. But in this context, that is a pretty average sized sign, um, where I do not think that that size is so small that nobody could see it, but the ultimate decision rests with you guys. C two P and C P, that massage is a little bit more, where you have a thirty-two square foot max for sites no more than two occupants. Same as C one P, you have a fifty square foot max for sites more, with more than two occupants, but less than ten. At that, uh, that level, you're allowed to have two separate fifty square foot signs. So again, there's a lot of leniency and tiered approaches when you have your shopping centers with multiple uses. Um, if you notice at the bottom, you're allowed to go up to a hundred square feet if you have more than ten occupants. So that language, again, did not change. The only thing I did is plugged in smaller allowable square footages. Uh, but if you feel that this size is a little bit too small, and the height is just a little bit too low, we can massage that. But the intent on how to deal with signs in C two P and C P is to allow for those shopping centers that have multiples. Because if you shorten it too small, and I got fifteen businesses, those fifteen little placards have to fit within that, that area. So that language that allowed them to go up a little bit more is still there. I didn't change that at all, I just changed the maximum allowable square footages. Going over to page, um, twelve, uh, this is your M P district, section one oh two A fourteen oh six five B, I mean, uh, B five A. Um, you're amending that language, uh, M P, uh, you're up, I think they allow three hundred square feet. But this is more your industrial areas. Um, I didn't want to go so low as fifty or seventy-five with these, but you have, you're, you're basically gonna have a hundred square foot max for your entrance. Um, you can, um, have, I think it allows for multiple signs, but each individual sign can't be more than fifty square feet if you have more than one. Section thirteen, billboards, one oh two A fourteen oh seven A one. Um, you guys wanted us to come up with language that pretty much restricted them to I ninety-five. I did talk to the county, Dan, and I think we may need to check, there may be a general statute. The language that's in place in another section does, uh, talk about, um, signs not having a sign limitation so long as they're, um, within fifteen hundred feet from the right of way of a freeway. If we basically put that in there as the only allowable location, it does indirectly take them out of being permitted in your commercial core of the town of Hope Mills, which is, I think, uh, was the intent. Um, and the last, uh, slide is taught, uh, uh, it speaks to signs prohibited. This is tied to the teeth portion that, um, with these nuisance signs. It basically states that any sign attached to or painted on utility poles, telephone poles, trees, parking meters, bridges, and overpasses are prohibited. So while I'm saying that, that we have this penalty phase for these types of signs, I'm putting language to specifically prohibit those types of signs. And that's basically it. Um, I will say, based on, um, based on what I heard from you guys, the three main areas that I'm thinking that you wanted changes. We're removing the five year period to allow any existing sign to be grandfathered. Your political signs, you are amending that to be the five P M the day before, to be consistent with the county. And that we're, uh, taking out sandwich boards, only allowed on Trey Street to allow them, uh, throughout the town of Hope Mills. But are there any other areas that you guys want? Um, and I do, I will consult with Dan on the content-based, uh, conflicts. But other than that, I think that's just about it. Unless you guys want some other.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Chancellor, on billboard signs.
Yes.
I noticed in, on page thirteen, you have, um, billboard, billboards shall be allowed only within fifteen hundred feet from the right of way of freeways, and then in parentheses, you have Interstate ninety-five.
Technically, if, with, well, I guess you're talking about two ninety-five, so I should take Interstate nine. That, that Interstate ninety-five is the language that's in there now, I just pulled this from another section, but.
I got it.
I think if you, if what you, where you're going with it is that this would, um, conflict when we have another interstate coming in, which is two ninety-five. And I probably need to just say right of way of freeways.
Well, yeah, because if I'm a business owner and I look at this, and I say, well, all I can do is put a billboard up out on, on Interstate ninety-five, according to this ordinance. And I don't think that's what we're trying to say. Only on I ninety-five, because you have that listed there. So if you were to strike out Interstate ninety-five and just leave that, I think it, I think it'll stay within the spirit of what we're looking for, for billboards.
Got it.
But that's up to the consensus of the board.
And I think, I think what you stated is what, um, I may have not have worded it right in my amendment, but I think what you stated was what I think was the, uh, were the wishes of the board, um, at the last session.
I agree with Mr. Bellflower's, uh, that could be misleading. But a question to you would be, the simplest way to resolve it, when they come in to get a permit, where am I allowed to put them? But if it was made a little more simple than.
And what, and, and again, one thing that I will do, whatever you guys, uh, if this is what we're moving forward with, um, I will ultimately do, um, a very aggressive, uh, notification to a lot of the businesses repeatedly, just to let them know, look, just, you know, um. But even though we're grandfathering the new ones, um, as we get new, um, businesses, I, I feel that just blasting this change out as much as we can lets everyone know what does, these new changes are.
I know that we have some that have come this evening, and if there's anything that you feel like you still need to add as far as a comment, I will allow a three-minute comment from those, um, developers, business owners. If you do have something else that you believe we need to be, uh, needs to be addressed within this sign ordinance, uh, that we haven't already addressed. So do we have anyone that would like to speak? Uh, yes, sir.
My name is Joe Riddle, I live in Fayetteville, North Carolina, I've lived there all my life. I lived in Gates Four for a while, we thought that was gonna be Hope Mills, but didn't end up that way. Um, I was real concerned, I really appreciate the mayor and the, and the board's comments about the grandfather. Uh, there would have been a lot of businesses, I, based on some of the language I've seen, probably two-thirds of the, well, all the pylons would have had to come down eventually, if it had the grandfather, uh, which would have been very expensive and damaging to some small businesses. I'm still concerned, I understand the, the thought about wanting to go to monuments and, um, and they, uh, look good and, and all that. Uh, I'm a little concerned that your square footages are, are gonna be very limiting. But I need to go look at some shopping centers that were built out of town, that might have monument, or maybe they have more than one. Uh, but when you start trying to get ten, fifteen, twenty businesses on a sign, and you're limited to fifty square feet, or whatever you had here, that's gonna be really small, and, uh, you'll have to have very good vision. And the sign will have to be maybe closer to the road, uh, with no, you know, shrubbery and stuff in the way, if you'd be able to read it. Um, I'm also concerned about the interstate. Um, my family has a lot of property at ninety-five and Chickenfoot Road, and I believe that in the next five years, we're gonna see a lot of development there. Uh, they're rebuilding the bridge, and they're, they're doing a lot of work to the road out there. But there are businesses coming, and it's gonna be tough to sign those with all the trees, and there's terrain when you get around the bridge, and you, you know, you're going up, and ramps coming down and all that. I, I'm not real sure that, that you should only allow monuments there. Um, and I don't know where that's been done on the interstate. Somebody might be able to fill me in on where there's interchange that has all monument signs, but, uh, but anyway, was concerned. Appreciate y'all's, uh, comments tonight, and, uh, I'm not against sign ordinances, and, and I know that you want to eliminate some negative things. I think you should at least allow two weeks or three weeks on grand opening banners. I think the language that Chancellor had only limited to one week, Ms. Mayor, so, thank y'all very much.
That's a good comment.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? And I think Chancellor, that would be something to address, I'm speaking myself, but for the board, is exit forty and exit forty-one. Because I think we're gonna see, um, with this upcoming new bridge, and with a lot of things happening out there, um, that signage might have to have a, a different look, because the way those businesses are gonna be located.
No Crackerberry on exit forty-nine, you see their sign from a distance, when you're doing seventy mile an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, but would the, would the, uh, the, the part about billboard signs for expressways, wouldn't that cover that?
I think, um, from my understanding of the intent of, um, you guys want me to focus on that. I don't think this ordinance is saying that areas close to freeways have to be monuments. I think the intent of this language was that you guys wanted to drive billboards away from the interior commercial core of town, of town of Hope Mills.
Correct.
So my understanding of this language is that the only places you could put billboards would be along the freeways. It's not that we're saying you have to do a different type of sign along the freeway. We're saying, and in this language, there is no sign height limitation, or square foot, I think you can't go over five hundred square feet. But my point is, this is only basically saying that the only place that you want billboards would be within that fifteen hundred, um, foot distance from a freeway, and that's basically the only thing I'm changing. Um, I, I, I'll clarify to make sure, but I don't, I don't, I don't think the intent of what I'm trying to do is trying to regulate what type of sign is, um, would be located along freeways. It's just that if you're doing a billboard, the only place you could put it would be within fifteen hundred feet of a, um, freeway. Everything else would be, um, what's currently allowed.
Anything else for Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, ma'am, make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn our special meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those in the audience, if you wish to.